Once again to Chinatown. As Gil Reyes reports, the hospital is reopening with a new name and purpose.
In a different type of medical miracle, a group of doctors are resuscitating Chinatown's only hospital from certain death.
This is what we fought for. We were not going to accept or tolerate the closing of this important institution. It's been here for over 100 years.
Chinatown Councilman Gilbert Sadio and friends celebrating the purchase of the old Pacific Alliance Medical Center site on College Street.
It served many of the Asian-Chinese immigrant population as well as the Latino immigrant population until it closed its door.
The hospital shut down late last year partly because of the high cost of earthquake retrofits. A consortium of medical groups have bought the site and renamed it Allied Healthcare City. By fall, expect an urgent care center with multilingual services. The plan is to eventually bring back a full-time hospital and hopefully have the state pitch in for seismic upgrades.
We think that state's in a great position to help them with the retrofit, both in subsidizing it and in working with the timeline. And I know that from my 15 years in Sacramento that we can solve those types of problems.
While continuing to serve older adults, mostly Asian and Latino-Americans in the area. In LA's Chinatown, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The new urgent care center will initially provide a 12-hour service and will eventually expand to 24 hours as more people are hired. Well, it's part of the Nisei Week tradition. How many gyozas can you eat in one sitting? Well, this year marks the 12th annual eating competition, and you'd be surprised how many folks can swallow to claim the championship.
Little Tokyo in downtown LA has been hosting the Nisei Week Japanese Festival for more than 70 years, giving folks a chance to experience Japanese culture and food. Nisei Week was first held during the Great Depression when Little Tokyo was also going through tough times. Issei, the first generation of Japanese immigrants, came up with Nisei Week to attract younger crowds and support stagnating businesses.
We just came out for the summer festival, just to, you know, have the kids out, have a good time.
I'm here for the Rubik's Cube competition, and then we stop by and walk around the fair.
Over a seven-day period, the festival highlights various events and exhibitions, parades, and much more. The World Gyozza Eating Championship is a major attraction with 19 competitors this year. Renowned world champion eater Joey Chestnut came to defend his title from last year and holds the world record of eating 384 gyozas, a Japanese dish made of wonton wrappers stuffed with pork and cabbage. And his strategy?
Breathe, breathe, chew, swallow. Don't forget to drink the water. Don't overstuff my mouth. Pay attention to the muscles that are getting tired.
We have a total purse of $6,000 that's distributed with the top 10. They also get Sapporo beer.
The word "Nisei" means "second generation" in Japanese. It refers to the audience that the festival originally tried to attract, Americans of Japanese descent. However, today, the festival attracts many diverse groups of people.
The other main highlight of the festival is the grand parade. For more info, check out nisewek.org. Well, it's a first-of-its-kind bar in historic Filipino town with a twist.
Nightlife in LA's historic Filipino town just got livelier with the area's only tavern owned by a group of Filipina-American women, a rarity in this male-dominated profession. Welcome to Geneva, the concoction of UCLA alumni Roselma Salma, Christine Sue Miller, and Patricia Perez.
Myself, Christine, and Patricia were together just chatting about our current careers, our current lives, and wanting to do something more or have control over our own wealth.
The result is this softly-lit speakeasy-style gin lounge with a feminine touch.
It's always so intimidating to go into a bar by yourself, especially as a woman. So we wanted to make sure that this was a place where women can come in and be comfortable and relax and have a great drink.
And keeping with the Filipino theme, many of these concoctions are classic favorites with a dash of Filipino culture mixed right in. Take this drink, the Blanca Branca. It's basically a pina colada with Filipino rum, mabuhay. Geneva has also added calamansi, a popular Filipino citrus, and ampalaya, Filipino bitter melon, to create other luscious libations. Head bartender Kelso Norris, a soon-to-be mom, collaborated with the owners to honor femininity and the Philippines.
Comparing food dishes and dessert dishes and things from their childhood that they loved, and me asking, does this flavor work? You know, how would you use calamansi if you were replacing, you know, lime or lemon? And then a lot of delicious trial and error.
A Kickstarter campaign helped launch Geneva in March. The names of 100 donors are respectfully etched on bar stools and artwork. The nonprofit group search to involve Filipino-Americans also helped. In fact, the bar sits at CIPA's former headquarters.
And to have this place be reborn and revitalized as the most beautiful gin bar in Los Angeles is such a plus for our city that welcomes the diversity. The mayor, Eric Arsetti, is such a champion when it comes to women, gender equity, and small business diversity. So this is like a five-for, everything that you would wish for.
Visit Geneva at 3123 Beverly Boulevard in historic Filipino town.
Geneva is open Tuesday through Saturday. Well, it's the first such workshop of its kind where Angelenos get a chance to give input on how city services can improve their quality of life.
These South LA residents and city workers are putting lists together as they work to help design better LA city services.
I think that in a city that's so dispersed as Los Angeles, finding ways to connect people through our problems and, more importantly, through our underlying emotions is a great way to get people to understand the power of community.
The event called Design Your LA is run by the Information Technology Agency, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and the LA Public Library. It asks residents to share their experiences and challenges in getting city services and what needs to change. Issues run the gamut from police harassment and LA traffic to the lack of bus benches.
And all the bus stop benches off the bus stops, people can't sit down, the elderly can't sit down.
Police harassment needs to be dealt with because they feel very disrespected.
Notice that even in off-peak hours, that there's still traffic.
A lot of people live in someplace and work 60, 70 miles away. So you have a lot of movement from one place to other, and then it's not.
But I think it might be making the situation worse, not better, that you have everybody finding the same, what used to be your shortcut. Everybody.
The Information Technology Agency, which runs digital information services and computer technology for the city, will use the input to target problems. For example, traffic can be improved by changing how the city times its stoplights. The police harassment issue might require a little more brainstorming.
I'm really excited about the number of folks who've come out to share their ideas and who are really interested in working together to make a difference.
And soon, all these little rectangles will be used as data to improve the quality of life for all Angelenos.
The Information Technology Agency plans to have more of these workshops throughout the city. A hip-hop dance pioneer helped make the streets a little bit safer this summer while showing off some of his signature moves.
It's no joke. Hip-hop dancer Tommy the Clown was part of an effort to help reduce gang crime in South Los Angeles. The originator of the clowning dance craze was the special guest at the Summer Night Lights event. The crowd loved it.
This is my first year working for SNL. It's good to get back to the community.
SNL, or Summer Night Lights, keeps city parks open late during the summer months with supervised recreation for youth. City leaders say since SNL launched in 2007, participating parks have seen a significant drop in area crime.
This is something that we do, especially during the summers, to make sure that our kids and others have something, some activities to do. So I like to see it happen all year round, but I'm just happy that it's occurring here where we need it.
South LA Councilman Karen Price hosted the Summer Fun Fair at Slosin Recreation Center. Thirty-two parks and rec centers participated in SNL programs this summer. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
KDAY radio also broadcasts from the event. Two LA festivals celebrate LA's diverse communities, and kids in Silmar have a new place to climb and swing. All these stories in City Beat.
Nonprofit group DTLA Proud held its third annual LGBT festival. The three-day event was held in downtown's Pershing Square. The group's goal is to expand, strengthen, empower, and grow the local LGBT community through partnerships, events, and other activities.
Our mission is to expand the definition of diversity, spread optimism, celebrate the LGBT community.
I believe people should be treated equally, so stuff like this kind of gets the message out.
The Latina Fest Mind, Body, and Soul Lifestyle Festival was held at La Plaza de Cultura de Artes, featuring health and wellness vendors and athletic demonstrations. Emmy Award-winning actress/TV host Fernanda Kelly served as MC. A live taping of the trend talk show served as the day's hallmark event. There are also a handful of cooking demonstrations. The event celebrates Latina entrepreneurs, business owners, entertainers, and consumers.
Latinas, this is your year to thrive, to grow in yourself, get to know who you are, and follow your dreams. Pursue your passions.
The City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, celebrated the grand opening of San Fernando Park. The 10,000-square-foot park located in Silmar features a play area, fitness station, picnic benches, and drought-tolerant landscaping. The Department of Rec and Parks is committed to increasing green space within park-poor communities. This new park will help meet the demands of the local community and will provide opportunities for residents to enjoy outdoor recreation activities within walking distance from their home.
I think it makes a really big difference for the youth that are living here to be able to access and play with more comfort for the parents.
Are you looking to add a new family member? LA City Animal Shelters are here to help.
Would you like to take this nice furry friend home today? You'd be doing the City of LA a favor.
All six animal services centers are at capacity. We have hundreds of dogs and cats, bunnies, waiting for their new homes. So we're hoping to encourage the LA community to adopt, to bring home a new best friend. They are going to make your life so much better.
Ashley Rodriguez from LA Animal Services tells us some of the current prices at city shelters. Dogs are available for $100. You'll also need a dog license with that. Dog licenses are $20, while adult cats are being given away for free. And it's not just raining cats and dogs here.
Bunnies, guinea pigs, hamsters, turtles, lizards, they all make great pets. And we have them available for adoption. Rabbits are $71, but our guinea pigs and other critters are only $17 to adopt. And our rabbits come spayed, neutered, microchipped, and vaccinated.
Last year, 90% of dogs and cats at LA City Animal Shelters avoided euthanization. Local leaders want to improve those numbers, hoping the city's mandatory spay-neuter law will help. The city offers free and discounted spay-neuter rates for dogs and cats. City shelters are located in Van Nuys, San Pedro, Lincoln Heights, South LA, West LA, and Chatsworth. Bring home a new friend today.
See up-to-date price lists and specials at laanimalservices.com. If you're thinking about going electric, well, here's your chance to test drive one. If you're an aspiring Latina writer, you won't want to miss this conference and catch a movie at the Sunset Triangle Plaza. All this and this week's things to do. Join the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power in downtown LA and get behind the wheel of a plug-in electric vehicle. Officials say electric vehicles are fun to drive, are less expensive, and more convenient to fuel than gasoline vehicles. They say they're also better for the environment, promote local jobs, and reduce our dependence on petroleum. Experience the excitement of driving a range of EVs. Talk to EV owners who already have made the switch and learn about the LADWP Charge Up LA rebate program for home and workplace charging infrastructure. Bring the family to enjoy food trucks, vendors, EV displays, and lots of fun. The first 500 test drivers get free coupons for food from participating food trucks on site. The festival takes place September 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power located at 111 North Hope Street. Come out for the Second Annual Latina Writers Conference, featuring workshops that explore the diversity of the city's Latina writing community. Topics include film and theater, publishing, children and young adult literature, academia, and more. All panels and workshops are designed to encourage discussion long past the closing of the conference. Numerous vendors and authors will be presenting their publications and work throughout the day. Bring your children. Childcare with lots of activities will be provided free of charge. Tickets are free, but early registration is encouraged. The conference takes place September 8th from 9:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. at Plaza de la Raza Cultural Center in Lincoln Heights. The Silver Lake Picture Show has been showing free outdoor movies in Silver Lake's Sunset Triangle Plaza since 2012 and has grown to be one of LA's biggest free outdoor movie theaters. The Silver Lake Picture Show aims to provide a platform for local artists and a communal ground for the neighborhood to gather and enjoy an entertaining and free evening. With more than 600 attendees per show and over 20,000 attendees in its six seasons, the Picture Show transforms Thursday nights at the Sunset Triangle Plaza in Silver Lake into a bustling community center. Bring your friends, family, chairs, picnics, and eager yearning for enjoyment. The next film screening is rush hour, taking place Thursday, September 13th at 7:30 p.m. at the Sunset Triangle Plaza. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our latest social media videos, LA This Minute.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everybody would please take their seat. It is September 4th, Tuesday. Welcome to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Everyone is welcome. Please take a seat. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonner, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Caress, Kirkorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, O'Farrell moves. Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris Dawson moves. Bloomingfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we rise? I'll ask Mitch O'Farrell to lead us in our flag salute. All rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everyone could place their hand over the heart. Look at our Stars and Stripes. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items eight and forty-one to Friday, November, Friday, September 7th.
Okay, without objection.
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on the item.
Then continue.
Items two through thirty are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's hold item twenty-nine.
There is also a request to hold item fourteen, Mr. President.
We'll hold that as well. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Item five, let's hold that as well, and we'll vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue, please.
Items thirty-one through thirty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on all items.
Then let's move forward.
On the supplemental agenda, item forty is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on this item.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, why don't we begin with our presentation of the day? And I'd like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Bloomingfield, the floor is yours.
Got a big group here. What is it, a new year or something? All right, all right. Council President Wesson, colleagues. We are here once again to celebrate the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah, which actually begins this year on September 10th. This presentation was originally going to be done by Mr. Caress. He brought it forward. I want to thank him for doing that and gathering all of you here today. He had a little bit too much apples and honey, and he is not feeling well, and so he's not going to be able to join us. And he's asked me to pitch in with him. But he wanted to make sure that on his behalf, we wish them, everyone here, a happy and sweet new year. So I have with me here my colleague David Rue. Mitch Englander also apologized. He's not able to make it today. He wanted to be part of it. But he also is in here in spirit. And we are joined by our illustrious city attorney Mike Fuer and city controller Ron Galperin. And I'm delighted to help host this event along with my colleagues and the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles. In celebrating this holiday, we are also joined by several members of our city family. And we are thrilled to have representatives from the Israeli consulate, including the deputy chief of mission, Etan Weiss, and Carol, Carolyn Bet Natan, who is the director of public affairs and a special advisor to the consul general, and Elliot Milner, the director of political affairs. So quite an amazing group here. So before we get to the speakers, I want to mention that, as you know, Rosh Hashanah is a joyous time of year. It's fifty-seven seventy-nine. So remember, stop writing on your checks, fifty-seven seventy-eight. You know, oftentimes, we keep doing that for years, months ahead. It is, yeah, Mr. Galperin says he's made an official instruction to his office. So that is good. It's a time of reflection. Rosh Hashanah is a time, you know, where you reflect on the year past. You get ready, and ultimately, when this holiday comes to its close at Yom Kippur, and you atone for your sins, this, this is the time period where you look back and you think, how can I make the world better? How can I make our community better? And that's, yes, it's a, it's a Jewish holiday, but it is, it is something that can help us all reflect in terms of making our lives and our community lives better. So while the focus is, is about joining together and making ourselves better, we want to remind us of the vitality and sweetness, and that's where the apples and honey come in place. And so now I'm going to introduce some of my colleagues here who will say a few words, and some of our special guests as well. So starting with council member David Rue, who is not there. So I'm going to start with our wonderful city attorney, Mike Fuer.
Happy New Year, Bob. Happy New Year to everybody. As Bob mentioned, that Rosh Hashanah is a happy time, and yet a time of introspection as well. A time for us to celebrate all the beauty in the world, and what we've contributed to make the world better. At the same time, a time for us to look deeply into ourselves, into our hearts, to evaluate if we're doing enough. And I know that all of us here in this building feel that there is so much more we need to do to assure that our brothers and sisters who live on our curbs and on our streets have roofs over their heads and the services they need to change their lives. We think about the issues in our city.
Can I stop you for a minute, Mr. City? People, can we be quiet and be respectful? Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. We think about the issues in our city, and we think about the issues throughout our world. We reflect on the fact that our climate is changing rapidly with impacts here in Los Angeles and throughout the globe every day. What are we each doing to remedy the tremendous issues that we contend with every day? What are we each doing to assure that we alleviate homelessness? What contribution are we making to assure that we grapple with and slow the effects of climate change and all the issues in between? It's a happy time. It's a reflective time. But most importantly, it's a time for each of us to renew, not only ourselves, but our commitments to each other and to the greatness of our city, which has still yet to be revealed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Fuer, next we hear from our controller, Mr. Ron Galperin.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Council member Bloomingfield. It's really a pleasure, honor to be back here in council chambers as we ring in the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. And it's really a both universal holiday, as well as a timeless one, because we can all relate, no matter what our backgrounds are, to a season where we really take stock, where we think about the year that was, where we think about where we want to be next year, and really reflect on that, make mends, make amends with those who are around us, and seek to constantly become not just better people, but a better city, a better society, and to meet the challenges that we have in front of us. And there's a timelessness to this, because there's a cycle of the year. And each year, we have an opportunity to do this. I wanted to thank the Jewish Federation, to thank also the consulate of the state of Israel for being here. And one last thing I will add, which is, if you're wondering how to do a greeting for the Jewish New Year, in English, you say, "Happy New Year." But in Hebrew, it actually has an even deeper meaning. You say, "Shana Tova." Now, shana in Hebrew means year, but it also shares the same root as the word for change. And tova is not just about happiness. It's about goodness, and it's about creating goodness. So when you wish somebody a shana tova, you're also wishing a year of change, and a year of good change. And it's something that we all have the power within us to help effectuate. And thank you so much for all that it is that you do as we work together to improve our city and all of our communities here in Los Angeles. Shana tova.
Shana tova, Ron. Now I'd like to bring up Rabbi Jason Weiner, president of the Board of Rabbis of Southern California, and senior rabbi and director of the spiritual care department of Cedar Sinai Hospital. Rabbi.
Shalom, friends. Thank you, council, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly thank you all for the incredible work that you do. Rosh Hashanah, as has been mentioned, is actually a very universal holiday. It's the day that we celebrate as the commemoration of the creation of all of humanity. Every human being, we believe, was created on the day of Rosh Hashanah. And we believe that God therefore looks at us all this time of year and just asks us to look at ourselves and wonder, are we fulfilling the mission for which we were created for? Every human being to make the world a better place? And we just stop and reflect. Are we doing our best to make the world a better place and to live up to our own unique mission? And for me, standing here in this chamber with all of you who dedicate your lives to the improvement of our great city and our society and of human beings, it's an inspiration for me. And I just want to thank you for doing so much for, for humanity. And this is exactly what this time of year is all about. And so we thank you, and wish you all shana tova.
Shana tova, Rabbi. Next, please join me in welcoming the deputy chief of mission, Etan Weiss, from the Israeli consulate.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and good morning on this beautiful day. First, I'd like to thank the president, Mr. Herb Wesson, attorney, city attorney, Mike Fuer, Ron Galperin, our good friend, and of course, council members Bloomingfield and council member Caress. I understand he doesn't feel that well, and I'm sending him the best wishes. It's great to be in this beautiful chambers, looking at so many friends to celebrate this beautiful holiday, which, by the way, is the starting point of many, many holidays to come in the next couple of weeks, which would be a very terrible strain on my diet. So hopefully, I'll be able to fulfill my task, not getting too much weight. As the previous speakers before me have mentioned, we are definitely talking about a beautiful holiday where we think retrospectively about the year that is, has ended, pondering and reflecting on our successes and failure, and looking forward on our achievements, and aspiring for what we really want to achieve in the upcoming year. For us, the state of Israel, the Israeli consulate, we have two main goals. The first one is to deepen and strengthen our everlasting ties with the Jewish community living outside of Israel, and of course, increasing our cooperation with the beautiful city of Los Angeles. To us, it's of great importance. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had a very important delegation coming from Israel with the Israeli fire chief. They had amazing meetings with their counterparts here discussing ways they can combat fires and actually save lives. And there could be no finer, finer example of how we can achieve greatness when we work together. So for me, in the upcoming year, I hopefully be able to fulfill the task of working closely with the great friends that we have here to increase our collaboration and aspire and do greatness together. And I also like to use this opportunity to thank the Jewish Federation in Los Angeles for doing amazing work in bringing all of us together on these beautiful days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shana tova, deputy chief, Etan. The Jewish Federation of the Greater Los Angeles is a constant source of remarkable good, both for our city and for the world, for it makes a tangible, utterly positive impact in the lives of tens of thousands of people in Los Angeles, Israel, and in more than seventy countries. Representing them today is Becky Sobelmann Stern. She is the executive vice president and chief program officer, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce her now. Becky.
Good morning. I am Becky Sobelmann Stern, executive vice president and chief program officer at the Jewish Federation. It is an honor to be here this morning. On Rosh Hashanah, there are many foods and blessings that are recited. The most popular are apples and honey to represent a sweet New Year, a sweet shana tova. But there are other blessings which are less known. It's customary on Rosh Hashanah to eat a fish head. Yes, a fish head. Or you could use the head of a ram, or any other type of kosher animal. May we be a head and not a tail. I want to reflect on that for a second. What does this blessing mean? For a fish, the head steers the course of where the fish is headed, while the tail, in the back, reacts to the flow of the tide. To me, the blessing of being a head and not a tail means that in this new year, in fifty-seven seventy-nine, we need to be proactive rather than reactive. We need to be thoughtful and strategic, and steer the course of where we would like to go, rather being pushed around by the shifting tides. This lesson is true both in our lives personally, and on Rosh Hashanah, we reflect personally, and we reflect as community leaders. And this principle informs the work that we do, that we do every single day at the Jewish Federation. We strive to be like the head, to be thoughtful and strategic in our work, and to take initiatives to address pressing communal needs. As you know, here we go, here's the analogy. Two heads are always better than one. So we bring all the heads together, all the community leaders together at moments like today and throughout the year, building bridges between various parts of the community so that we can work to improve our city and our community. We face our problems head-on. This year, for the High Holidays, we have launched an initiative called Save Our Survivors, which helps Holocaust survivors in our community. In Los Angeles, more than three thousand survivors live in poverty, increasingly frail, and often very alone. To allow them to live as independently as possible in their homes, we are raising funds to provide essential help with home care services like transportation to doctor visits, personal care, lighthouse keeping, and grocery shopping. This is the Federation and the Jewish community of Los Angeles bringing all those heads together. In this moment of new beginnings, may we all be the head, not the tail, steering our city, our community, towards a good, sweet New Year. And let me wish you all a shana tova, a sweet year.
Shana tova, Becky. Shana tova. Next, I want to introduce Rabbi Joshua Hoffman, who is the rabbi of VBS, or Valley Beth Shalom. It's in Encino. And he is the executive vice president of the Board of Rabbis of Southern California. Rabbi Hoffman.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. It is a great honor to share this holiday with the city and to be present in the chambers once again. I hold in my hand a shofar. This is a ram's horn. At one point, it was actually attached to a living creature, and it has been since cleaned out, thankfully. And it has been drilled to be turned into an instrument which brings a sound we hear only at this time of year. Now, a few moments ago, we were just sounding outside, and we celebrated the global diversity of the Jewish community. And for those of you in Los Angeles know, we are an incredibly diverse city, with many voices, with many needs, with many sounds. Just like this shofar that is sounded in a few different ways throughout the Jewish world on these holidays, we're also sounding this shofar in our city to celebrate the many diverse voices. Despite the differences, there is one continuous thread between them all, an opportunity to be awakened, to be called to renewal, to stand, stand upright in a year of righteousness, and a year of health, and a year of joy. And I would like for all of you to please stand up with all of us as we sound the shofar for this new year. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
You were going to pass out at the end last session.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue now, if that's okay with you, Mr. Rue.
Please.
Thank you, Councilman Bloomingfield, for doing this presentation. And thank you to all the presenters for being here today on Rosh Hashanah, on the, to celebrate Rosh Hashanah and shana tova. Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, is an opportunity to reflect on where we've been and endeavor towards where we want to go. It's also a time for us to start anew and to reflect, and also have a recommitment to our communities and to each other, which is more important than ever. So thank you so much for coming to City Council to us to, to recognize the beginning of Rosh Hashanah on the year of five, seven, seven, nine. That starts September 9th, this Sunday, and ends on the 11th. Thank you. Shana tova.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Back to you, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Well, it's been, it's a pleasure. Thank you all for, for helping us celebrate this, this holiday. If you, if you celebrate the temple, and I wish you an easy fast, come Yom Kippur, and have a sweet New Year. Shana tova.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Buscaino. Joe, for introduction.
Can I come on up? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This week, the Democratic municipal officials will have its board retreat here in the city of Los Angeles. And I want to recognize- And I want to recognize the Executive Director Barbara Moore alongside two key leaders with the Democratic Municipal Officials Organization, which is the largest Democratic Municipal Official Organization in this country. And I want to actually have our Controller join us as well in this introduction, who then Councilmember, come on, Ron. Then Councilmember Eric Garcia introduced me to the DMO and was able to serve on its Board of Directors. Now, we have our own City Controller, who's on the Board of Directors, joining Ron. Our Controller is a great alderman from the 54th Ward of the city of Chicago, Joe Moore. Forty-ninth Ward, sorry.
Just give him a round of applause.
Forty-ninth Ward.
Welcome.
Alderman Joe Moore. And the Mayor of Burlington, North Carolina, Mayor Ian Baltutis, who's here. Ian, thank you so much for joining us. I want to recognize also Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Ru, you've been very active with the DMO. Thank you, Mitch and David, for embracing the DMO. Enjoy the week here in Los Angeles, and we want to officially welcome you to the John Ferraro Council Chambers. Thank you for all that you do in representing Democratic Municipal Officials around the country. We appreciate your guidance and your leadership. It's important for them to engage and connect Democratic Municipal Officials around the country and do so in a way that focuses on their true values in city halls across the country. Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues.
Give him one more round of applause again. Thank you. Welcome to Los Angeles. Sean, are you here? Come on down, Sean.
And, Mr. President, as the Speaker makes his way forward, there is a request to continue Item 37 to September 18th.
So ordered. Okay, Sean, you have Items 1, Item 1 in public comment. Go ahead.
What about 29? Item 29, I support the scooters, but they need to wear helmets when they ride them. It's a law for the bike.
Why don't you talk about that during your general public comment, Sean?
Item number one I am against, general public comment. Item 29, I was saying, when you ride your scooters, I support the scooters, but wear a helmet. LAPD, you need to enforce the law. When I ride in the sicily, a bike rides, I wear my helmet. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. At this time, I'd like to call up JT. No, in fact, I want to go Bill Watkins and then Jason. Come on down. This is for general public comment.
Good morning. Thank you. Happy Rosh Hashanah. I forget the words. Tova. Thanks. It's nice to be back. I've put into record my own little cheat sheet on decorum for City Council and what I think are applicable California penal code to what happens on this microphone right here in reference to abusive language that can make people want to do something violent. That's a 415. And I've given the cheat sheet to the City Attorney Desk. I am prayerful that we have decorum from this microphone and from this meeting. We can't accomplish anything at City Council unless we have a serious meeting with serious people. We can have fun and do our celebrations, but if someone's calling someone by name a derogatory term. I cried after last meeting. That's how sensitive I got when I got sober. But I support decorum and a real strong hand from the top down to these Sergeant of Arms. God bless us, and let's have nice meetings.
Thank you. Please come forward. Identify yourself.
My name's Jason. I'm here against Item 29. Is this the right moment to speak?
You have your general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning. Bird scooters use public space to store private inventory. Their PR initiative to tidy their scooters, SOS, is impractical and unrealistic. Everyone else in L.A. is expected to put away the things that belong to them. We shouldn't use our community as corporate storage. Bird's litter spoils our city. Bird says someone using a scooter is not using a car. Please don't be fooled by this feel-good, unproven assertion. Bird does not reduce car traffic. Bird reduces foot traffic. Bird takes people who would use the sidewalk for free and puts them on the road for pay. I think this is dangerous. Los Angeles already has a last-mile solution, Metro Bike Share. It is a better solution with broader benefits than Bird. Los Angeles should expand Metro Bike Share for the benefit of all Angelinos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that during the last two comments, Mr. Herman has been gesticulating quite a bit. It wasn't one fleeting motion. It was obviously a series of things designed to distract us and disturb the meeting. I suggest we ask him to stop.
So, Mr. Herman, this is your first and final warning, okay? You continue, you will be asked to leave. Okay, now I'd like to call up two excellent bros that are friends of mine, JT and Chad. Please come forward, JT and Chad.
What up, Council? My name is Chad Kroger. I'm an activist and scooter devotee. I stand before you here today because word has spread that you would like to give Bird scooters the heave-ho. In the short time that I've used these scooters, they have come to impact my life hugely. I get tremendous joys. I travel from pokey shop to smoothie shop on these wonderful chariots. My dog, JT, even says I express my emotions more freely after a ride, which is tight. Seven years ago, I would have been in favor of the ban. It wasn't until I met Duncan Hockenberry that my perspective began to shift. He wanted to join the squad, but he was a razor scooter dude, and I thought it was pretty lame. But then we partied at his parents' house, and they had a super sick infinity pool, and I realized I had judged him too quickly. We even tandem rode his scooter to cop a 30 rack from Savon. It was beautiful. We have since lost touch. In the movie Shawshank Redemption, Morgan Freeman says these words about Tim Allen. Some birds aren't meant to be caged. Thank you.
JT, welcome.
What up, Council? My name is JT Parr. One time I was chilling, and Chad told me to follow him to City Council so we could give speeches to get Paul Walker a statue to unify the country. I asked why it had to be me. And then Chad quoted a song from the soundtrack to the motion picture Spider-Man 1 starring Kirsten Dunst. And they say that a hero could save us. I'm not gonna stand here and wait. And I'm not gonna stand here and wait. I'm going to scoot us into the future. The real issue in our urban communities is not scooters, it's cars. There's too many of them, and they admit stuff that's bad for our sky and our lungs. Cars isolate us, while scooters make us part of our environment, which is huge for bonding. I throw a lot of head nods while on my scooter. So I propose that we ban cars and make scooters go faster so they'll be more viable for travel, and I have a poster of what that looks like.
Thank you. Thank you, JT. Thank you. Ms. Richardson, Jacqueline Richardson, please come. Jacqueline Richardson.
There's a big problem in the city that's not apparent to people who don't live in the main downtown area. The problem is there is a lot of police sirens, ambulance sirens, fire truck sirens, and unless you're in that area, you don't hear them. It's not normal. It's been going on for about nine months or so. I don't know what the problem is, because you see the fire trucks going, ambulance is going, police sirens going. And when they get to some locations, there's one person there. It's not normal. Before this time, you would hear a siren about once every two hours. It happens between First Street, about Olympic, Alameda, to about Figueroa. Sometimes it's every 15 minutes. Like yesterday, it was intermittent between eight and 15 minutes. It's not normal.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to Mr. Spindler. Items 31, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Items 31 through 35. 5 and 14 as well, and your general public comment.
And before we start up, Mr. President, on Number 14, I were reopening public comment because I believe there may be a motion to instead of having the restriction apply to both sides of Topanga Canyon, only apply to the west side of Topanga Canyon from Nordoff Street to Parthemas Street.
And, Mr. President, before the Speaker starts, a substitute motion has been posted and circulated for Item 5 also.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Yeah, it means nothing to me. All right, so let's see here. Free-floating rage program on Item 1. Yes, I support free-floating rage on the roads. I think everybody should have a club when traffic is slow, like this morning on the 101. Everybody should be allowed to one swing per week. And on a scooter, you should get two baseball bats and get these goddamn roads moving. This is an absolute fucking travesty. Open up those lanes. Because the reason all this shit's happening is because the guy's right. We gotta go to those high-powered fucking scooters, man. That's why I was late today. So now, we're going here to Number 31, 32, 33, 34, 35. Gotcha! Boom! Gotcha. See, because what you did is your little goat, eh 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 eh. His name is Paul Krikorian, known as the Armenian Disbarred Goat, eh 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 eh, illegally with Mr. Bob Blumenfield, both of them conveniently not in their seats, hiding under their desks right now. They're in hiding right now as I speak. You know why they're in hiding? Because they committed 11 statewide crimes on August the 20th. And then your city clerk and your city attorney furthered the crimes. Oh, you want to interrupt? Well, that's another crime. Because you see, you guys held illegal meetings. You held an illegal secret meeting on top of the illegal meetings.
Get on topic. Mr. Spindler, let's stay on the agenda items.
modulently stated that these items were passed out of a committee that never existed because you didn't have a quorum. No quorum, no meeting. Gotcha! See, this is the problem.
Mr. Spindler, maybe this is better in general public comment.
Why don't we give him his one minute for public comment?
To speak on those items. I'm speaking on those items.
You're speaking on your public comment now, Mr. Spindler.
Attorney criminal, fobble, Mr. Criminal. I had a right to speak on those items. You just stole my one minute of time, just like on August the 20th, when Mr. Krikorian violated 11 times state law. Now, you people need to be shut the fuck down because you got 11 items totaling a total of how much? $8 million of city business. You're gonna have to undo all of it. All of it's gonna have to be undone. That means the kids don't get their parks, sidewalks don't get repaired, because you guys don't show up to meetings. You don't give a fuck about the Brown Act. You don't give a fuck about anything. The only thing you're interested in is me. It's me! It's me! That's right. Just keep focusing on the clown up here while the rest of you motherfuckers get investigated by the Brown Act because you're going down, motherfuckers. You're going down.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Your time's expired. Okay, Mr. Previn, I thought I saw you. Mr. Previn, why don't you begin to make your way down? You'll have Items 1, 5, 29, 30, no, not 29, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 38, 39, then your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And there are a number of items. I want to just simply say, La Shana Tova. That is a deeply moving presentation earlier. And we do miss Corretts. I hope he's okay. I know today was the day. He had asked for a ban on the scooters. But today at 29, the city is not gonna do a ban. But we'll get to that later, right? Or we won't get to it. Will you be opening the roll for that?
Let's move on to the agenda items he signed up for, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, no, I know, but it's on the agenda.
No, Mr., go ahead.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. Number 32, obviously. Nobody does a kind of a high-quality steak with butter in a broiler better than the Ruth Chris Steakhouse. And I can vouch for that personally, Mr. Price. It's a damn good steak, and they do a damn good business. The problem is that they overpaid once again to the tune of about $153,000. They keep forgetting that they're running an operation that's larger. So the city has to sneak up to Krikorian's claims board and approve $150,000 when nobody even can see a document. And then you all get updated that we're gonna push it out the door. Now, the steaks are great, and the refunds are terrific, obviously. But the question is, are they kosher, so to speak, on La Shana Tova? I mean, I just feel that this whole system of kicking back stuff to our friends, including Fox News, we remember when England... I mean, it's just a weird business that I was hoping Claire Bartels, when she took over after 21 years of service in the controllers, would clean this mess up. But it appears to be just another egregious mess. This is where Wine Trub, you remember, they're now trying to roll out the Happy Wine Trub, which is a guy named Ben Beasley in Studio City, where he's trying to sell us a retail environment on the corner, which has weird old entitlements and a sort of disgusting lawsuit where the city was involved. And it's bad, sir. It's bad, and it doesn't look good for this great city. Now, Item 34 is dispute resolution. This obviously is an area where any city could use a little help. And we're putting $170,000 into the mix, $136,000 of which is coming from the county. And let's go ahead and hire Avis Ridley-Thomas, because that's their line of work. No reason not to keep it all in-house. I don't see a reason not to. Item 35, here we have Bonin, as you know, is a leader in eating up the public roadway for private interests. But this one is the MTA. Now, the Metropolitan Transit Authority is having a hard time retaining people on the trains and getting, although they're rolling out a big program, and we're happy about it. This is about pedestrian protection, once again. It's about a $4 million in $2 million chunks to pedestrian protect. I think that dovetails with the fumbles on the phone. Is that okay during the meeting? But 29 is the one that he wants to shut me down on, which is about the scooters, because it's an uproar all over town, and people want to understand it. But we can't talk about it on the agenda.
Just stay on the items.
No, I know, but KNX was saying, come on down. We're having a big meeting. All right, fair enough. So you know they are promoting something that you're saying, no. So that's weird. Item Number 19 is a dodgy, sensitive area.
Just give him his general public comment.
All right, if you insist, sir. I appreciate the time. My general public comment has to do with a very shameful lawsuit. And it's upsetting to say this on Rosh Hashanah, but apparently the Leo Beck Temple, and Paul Corretts is not here, I assume. Nicky Minor, who's one of his Neighborhood Council insiders, they made a false and weird claim that there was a homeless encampment fire in Skirball. Everybody knows it was not true. The Times backed away. Hot, 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 too hot to touch. They had no evidence. They pulled a picture. Everybody, we wrote an article in The Intercept, and the Fire Department was like, it's inconclusive. Now, that temple in the Sepulveda Pass is suing the city of Los Angeles as if... And you'd think it sounds like a big scary lawsuit. It's a $25,000 lawsuit. So what are they doing? Why are we scapegoating homeless people in the richest part of town when there's no evidence? Where's Corretts? I mean, this is bad, okay? B-A-D, bad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walsh, are you here? John Walsh? Okay, let me get Mr. Gus. Mr. Gus, Items 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 40, and general public... public comment.
Good stuff. Council members, I have an article in City Watch this morning. Items thirty-one through thirty-five, if you vote on them, you're gonna have to undo them, because the motions in them were done by budget and finance, where only two of the five council members showed up. Read it. You didn't have a quorum. Why are you voting on it today? I filed a cure and correct with a clerk this morning. Mr. Fable, your office refused to take this on the eighth floor. If you want it, I have a copy for you, and because Mr. Weston's such a good friend of mine, I have a copy for you as well. If you vote on thirty-one through thirty-five, I guarantee you, you're gonna have to undo it. Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Blumenfield will be held personally liable for the harm that comes from voting on thirty-one through thirty-five. Similarly, last week, you settled four lawsuits for sidewalks in the LAPD on false motions by Krikorian and Blumenfield, which said that they were considered in budget and finance. There was no budget and finance meeting on August twentieth, they didn't have a quorum. So you voted to approve lawsuit settlements on motions with patently and provably false statements by Krikorian and Blumenfield, who will be personally liable. Also, the city will be liable for my legal filing fees and my attorney fees if you vote on these, and if you don't, cure and correct those settlements you approved last week. I have a copy of my new column with these letters, if Mr. Fable wants them, if Mr. Weston wants them, you can have them, but I guarantee you, you approve this, you're gonna be causing the city to spend a crap-load more money than it already has to right now. With my general public comment, Mr. Weston, recently, your communications director contacted me to find out what one of my columns was about, promising to answer questions, and then when I graciously shared the information with her, she actually ran with the story to David Zanisir at the LA Times. Accordingly, I will no longer give your office information on stories I'm working on. If you care to field any questions, and I am working on a story about your family right now, as you know, so because Vanessa dishonestly and underhandedly took a story that I asked her questions about, about your misusing public resources for your son's wedding, and ran to the LA Times with it, I will no longer give anybody on your staff the courtesy of knowing what story is in the works. However, I will always forward you, as is customary, and offer to field questions directly. It will, I don't wanna write these embarrassing stories about your family, but you're putting me in a position...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Herman. Now I got John Walsh. Okay, Mr. Herman, one, five, fourteen, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, and your general public comment.
So regarding transportation committee report on the ordinance, relative to establishing my fee schedules, being disabled makes it very difficult for a free-floating program, because after all, when you're disabled, there's nothing fucking free.
Stay on the topic, Mr. Herman. No, Mr. Herman, stay on the topic.
I'm on fucking item one, goddamn. Listen, what about item fourteen? Eighteen slash zero zero eight S fifty-three and CD twelve, the big years. Is that okay? Can I speak on that, item fourteen? It was reopened, is dealing with the fucking parking for oversized vehicles. I sleep in an oversized vehicle, just like I mentioned to Sacatecas the other day. And then going on to the next item, you see, being disabled doesn't make me unable to...
Stay on the topic, Mister...
Thirty-five, thirty-five, fucking citywide Metropolitan Transportation Authority Metro, for fucking safety of my fucking pedestrian rights, for fucking improvement, fucking projects, for fucking dynamic corridor. I need fucking ramps, and I want the ramps built now. Woollett's versus Los Angeles, and we have no curb ramps. We're out of date, and we're inundated with services, programs, and activities for no sidewalk and streets improvements, and our poor infrastructure. Why? Why have you authorized the Los Angeles Department of Transportation? Fuck L.A. DOT, whatever you mean, citywide pedestrian safety, when I have to cross the streets with my service dogs for those improvement projects? It takes you six fucking years to fix the sidewalks and streets, and everybody gets mad at us because I have to jaywalk because I'm fucking crippled. It's not fair! Life isn't fair, Herman! ADA, fuck you!
Okay, Mister Herman, keep your voice down.
And then I go onto item number, fuck, there's no fucking number, thirty-eight! Fucking thirty-eight about the fucking scooters with Joe Busciano funding for supportive administrative costs for Sheriff's Fest. Fuck your Sheriff Fest, Job, you fucking Italian wetback. All you do is make my fucking life miserable in order to effectuate intent of this motion. Now I want my fucking general public comment!
Mr. Herman, please keep your voice down, give him his one minute.
I was offended when Herman Jason Weston said he's willing to help me, a homeless man, in dire need of housing because of fucking wetbacks from Sacatecas, took away all our housing and subjected us to the streets. Again, deprivation of our civil rights on August twentieth, crimes, systemic crimes, illegal meetings subsequent to ongoing problems or programmatic issues, motherfucker. And now I, a public speaker, am being threatened and retaliated by a wetback from Sacatecas who stood up and interrupted my Brown Act rights. Fifty-four, nine fifty, fuck you stubble, hubble, fable, you fucking creamy white nigger. I am a Mexican, no, I'm an American!
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spindler, I mean, thank you, Mr. Herman. No, Mr. Herman, relax, and sit down. Let's go to item five. Do I have a Diane Prado, Andrew Oliver?
And, Mr. President, again, a substitute motion for item five has been posted and circulated.
Good morning, counsel. I first would like to thank the council for paving the way for a solution with this motion for knocking down barriers for tenants currently with pets at this moment. Heart L.A. is a legal nonprofit that particularly helps protect people and their pets. We're on the front line and on the ground of seeing firsthand every day tenants that are facing problems with being able to find affordable housing with their pet. I'd like to propose that we would, Heart L.A. would love to work together with the city and with H.C.L.A. to help promulgate, to help enforce these regulations, and to ensure that people and their pets are able to get affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down. Andrew?
Good morning, my name is Andrew Oliver, and I'm the communications associate at the Southern California Association Nonprofit Housing, representing over two-hundred-and-fifty affordable housing developers throughout the region. Our developers understand that owning a pet while being housed can be very important for improving the overall health and while being of an individual. In fact, state and federal rules already require developers to allow their service and companion animals. However, introducing a policy that would require developers to allow pets can also create some operational concerns for developers when neighboring residents and their families may be affected by the presence of these animals. Therefore, SCAMF recommends the council review SCAMF's comment letter that includes information gathered from affordable housing developers about the effects of a pet policy on building operations and residence, and instruct the Housing and Community Investment Department of Los Angeles to work with the Los Angeles Department of Animal Services and other interested parties to develop a pet policy that can guide building owners, building managers, and residents alike to ensure that the presence of pets in publicly financed buildings is managed in a responsible, safe, and harmonious manner. Thank you.
Andrew, stay there one second, could you, because you have general public comment as well. So why don't I give you a quick minute for that?
Oh, that was...
You're fine?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding, two votes?
That is correct. The first vote is whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now this actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, do we have Benny Kim? Yvonne Autry, Ms. Autry? Yvonne Michelle Autry? Amir Abdul? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, after, how many years have you been on council? You know, my name is Yvonne, not Yvonne. We don't say Yvette, it is Yvonne Michelle Autry.
I apologize.
Okay, so am I addressing all of the items and public comment?
You have, I think, two items, so you...
Well, I...
One item is what I have you for. So you have your one minute for general public comment. Start a time all over again.
So I requested twenty-nine, twenty...
Wait, wait, wait. It's come up. You have twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-nine. So give her three minutes, and then we'll do your general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. So consecutively, starting with twenty-nine, yes, I do think it's most important, instead of incriminating the black youth, Hispanic youth as well, that programs are implemented to create alternative means of them developing their gifts, their talents, aside of funding the police department, this police state of martial law, and the extermination, the incrimination and demonization of black men and black women, especially in South Central Inglewood, predominantly black neighborhoods, walking while black. You know, I was in Walgreens here downtown, and because of my face, you know, your laws prevention have surveilled me. So I know this is per your SAR, facial recognition, and also your predictive policing, which I object to, because this is going to be specifically used, of course, against black people, people of color, and those who resist your programming per this one-world government. So you're testing on people like me...
So, Mr. President, I'm not quite sure how this is on the agenda items.
Well, it's the gang reduction, it's just in addressing that issue, right, which is, it's designed to incriminate those that you're exterminating, so it is completely relevant. You take issue with that?
It seems unrelated to that.
Well, I'm gonna continue speaking anyway. So for the next item, I'd like to, relevant to thirty-three, yeah, again, any monies that you would have, I would urge Eric Garcetti and his body, his governing body, to use those, again, not for the maintenance or implementation of this police state under martial law, but for the youth, for veterans, for seniors, for poor people, and for those who are most in need, not the Jews. These people are not even the real Jews.
Okay, let's get back on the item.
Okay, but I'm going into public comment. The Jews were the black people...
Okay, now give her her public comment.
Well, no, this is, because this is where the money needs to be. The Jews have most of the money, and then the local government, the state government, and then the federal government, the Zionist Jews, Mormons, okay, that's the upper crust of the Illuminati. So you need to allocate this money in the neighborhoods where it is the greatest need, not in maintenance of this white male Zionist patriarchal status quo, okay? So, right, that being said, and then for a public comment, I'm against, again, the incrimination of those who you are sacrificing, right, namely, black people, women like myself, not to be put in the trash, I'm not your leftover turkey for target practice, for your one-world government cadets, okay? These are experimentations of people, not just on Skid Row, people who have been misdiagnosed as being mentally imbalanced to perfect your mind-control techniques for this one-world government. I'm against, also, the drones, because they will eventually be armed and used to destroy and to murder those like myself who are considered a prop...
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Autry. All right, thank you. And now let's vote on items thirty-one through thirty-nine. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's do item one. Okay, do we have a Mr. Kim and a Mr. Jasmine? Anna Jasmine and a Mr. Kim? Identify yourself, sir.
Your Honor, my name is Benny Kim.
Yes, sir.
How do you do?
Good, go ahead, your time.
All right. So can you please review what this is concerning? My vision's not the best.
You signed up to speak on this one, sir.
All right, fair enough. So basically, sir, charging a fee schedule for the car-share program and adding parking restrictions for the fees-floating program, it seems like something that might be pro-taxi, and it seems like this is actually something quite helpful, because I do know that Uber, Lyft, and many other things help drunk drivers not drive drunk, and that is a benefit to the society as well, to the city, as well as city members like yourself, because the last thing you wanna do is get hit by a drunk driver like I...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Your time's expired, Mr. Kim. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Patricia Richardson? Patricia Richardson? And Mr. Kim, again, you signed up for general public comment, so you have one more minute. I called you earlier. One minute.
Around about two thousand and three, I was actually hit by a drunk driver. Rosa Julia was in the car. We were in the fast lane, the car was stalled out because it was a Nissan, et cetera, et cetera. A drunk driver hit us. Unfortunately, I lost her, as well as somebody in the backseat. The car caught on fire. I chipped two vertebrae in my back, last year, I kid, he got a concussion, ended up at the, I believe, UCLA hospital. I believe that there was Lyft or Uber then, I might not have broke my back, which is quite painful, because to this day, I still have chips, chip back, and unfortunately, it will not go away, but thank God, I can still walk and whatnot. So therefore, I don't know if you guys need more proof of why Uber and Lyft should not be taxed? If you guys need more proof, pray to God.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk and Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment and also the multi-public comment. Let's take up item fourteen at this point.
And, Mr. President, a substitute motion has been posted and distributed on item number fourteen, so two votes are required.
Okay, let's vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now this actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's move to item forty. On item forty, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Mr. Rue, item twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, I really wanna thank Celita Marcel and all those at the Department of Transportation for their incredible work that you've done to develop these rules and regulations that are before us today. I also wanna thank Councilmember Mike Bonin and members of the Transportation Committee for their thoughtful input, and of course, Councilmember Blumenfield for seconding my motion and helping shepherd what we have before us through Public Works Committee. Nearly a year ago, when I introduced this motion that kicked off this process, there were two very young pilots, pilot programs in this city, one in Griffith Park and one in Mr. Busciano's district, but we were about to see a wider role... But we were about to see a wider role rollout of dockless bikes and then scooters on our streets. There were a number of safety, liability, and operational issues that came with that, but this was also an opportunity. I knew that if we were going to build out our first and last mile infrastructure in this city and take some actionable steps toward meeting our greenhouse gas reduction goals, that we were going to develop, we were going to need to develop a workable and enforceable regulation so that this new mobility option could flourish. What we have before us just does that. These rules are not perfect or final, and they are going to need tweaking over the course of this pilot, but they are also a springboard. They address our concerns around safety by prohibiting the use of vehicles on sidewalks and capping speeds. They require distribution across parts of Los Angeles at all income levels so that we can improve equitable access to the first last mile transit. And the department will have power to restrict fleet size or terminate those agreements if dockless companies aren't living up to their, living up to their end of the bargain. But if we're going to be serious about creating alternative models of transportations that don't involve polluting cars or bumper-to-bumper traffic, then dockless vehicles are a must. Now, there are a few amending motions before us and concerns, and I'm happy to discuss them today, but I have full faith in this body's ability to move this city's transportation infrastructure in the 21st century and get to us.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a complicated issue. Some of you have seen lots of scooters in your district, some haven't, and some would like to. Some folks see the dawn of dockless scooters, and this also applies, by the way, to dockless bicycles, as a great opportunity to increase multimodal options in Los Angeles, a great solution to the first and last mile problem, and a great solution to environmental issues because they do not use gasoline. On the other hand, there are some of us who consider them to be a tremendous nuisance and a public safety hazard that are blocking our sidewalks and that are causing problems for seniors, children, and people with disabilities. I happen to agree that both perspectives are true, which is why we need to have smart and sensible and comprehensive regulations that are enforceable. And so both my committee and Mr. Blumenfield's committee have been working on this for a while. And there are two things to consider today. There is the pilot program, and then there is what you do between now and the pilot program. So first of all, let me talk you through what is in the pilot program. First of all, safety. All vehicles will be required to adhere to California's safety standards and submit a record of reported collisions on a monthly basis. We're also going to require the bikes to have a taillight and scooters to have a minimum forty-eight-point font notice not to ride on sidewalks. It is illegal to ride motorized vehicles on sidewalks. For operation and maintenance, they have to provide maintenance logs and have a staffed operations center with a 24-hour hotline. For parking, the operators will be required to use a technology that can tell if a device is upright. They are required to maintain a 24-hour hotline and respond to improperly parked or inoperable vehicles within two hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. If they do not meet this two-hour standard, the companies can have their permits revoked. For the pilot program, the fleet size is designed in a way to address equity in Los Angeles and make sure that there will be this transportation option available in Mr. Price's district and in Ms. Martinez's district and other underserved parts of the city. Operators for the pilot program need to have a minimum fleet size of 500 and a maximum of 3,000 at launch. In order to achieve the equity goals, they can have an additional 2,500 devices in disadvantaged communities and another 5,000 devices in disadvantaged communities in the San Fernando Valley. That way, a company can launch with up to 10,500 devices if they are fully using the equity incentives. After demonstrating compliance with program requirements and meeting certain performance criteria, DOT can evaluate whether or not to increase the fleet size. The composition, to make the system more accessible to people with a range of fitness abilities, operators would be required to either make 50% of their bike fleets electric assist or 1% of their fleets handicapped accessible. Companies are going to be required to prepare an outreach plan that reflects local stakeholders in each community, including neighborhood councils, business districts, community organizations, senior organizations, and disability service providers. They also have to provide a non-smartphone option for reservations, a cash payment option, reduced fares for low-income individuals, a multilingual mobile app, and a call center. Crucial to Los Angeles, there are two things different here. One is the equity component and data sharing. A crucial thing is that LADOT is requiring a new data standard for the industry so that we get their data, we know what's going on, we know how many rides, we know how many collisions, and that can guide us. The permit pricing fees are 20 grand for an annual permit, 130 bucks per vehicle, or 39 per vehicle in a disadvantaged community. There's also a fee for relocation and removal and an $80 vehicle performance bond. Also anticipating that there is going to be other forms of unanticipated transportation, electric or dockless or otherwise. We've set the standard in this, that if a new form of dockless transportation comes up, whether it's dockless mopeds or dockless helicopters or whatever the hell is going to come up next, these rules will apply to them, and that will be the assumption. The question then, that's the overall program, the question is, what the hell do we do in the meantime? What do we do during the pre-pilot program? There are a couple of different proposals for you to consider. One is, T-Committee recommendation essentially said, let's freeze in place what was happening in the city June 1 until the actual permits are issued in 128, 120 days. Public Works Committee said that is unfair to companies that have been abiding by the law and waiting, so let's let every company in during the pre-pilot phase, but limit them to 1,500 vehicles per company. And so those are two different proposals before you. Mr. Buzkayeno has a motion today that would move the T-Committee recommendation, essentially, freezing in place June 1, and the Public Works Committee report says, let's let any company in with 1,500. And then there may be some variation on that as we discuss it. But that is sort of where we are today. That is the outlines of the actual pilot proposal. It'll be one year. DOT will have to report within 90 days and every 90 days to committee on how it's going. And then Mr. Blumenfield and I have an amending motion that does a little cleanup stuff, which asks for a series of report backs on a number of things, including enforceability rules, the potential for revenue generation above and beyond what is called for so far, and a few other details. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Mr. Buzkayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to leadership of the two committee chairmen, Mr. Blumenfield and Bonin, for leading this discussion, putting forth some recommendations. Colleagues, you know, in this city, we are number one in trade, we're number one in tourism, we're leading the nation in green technology, but we continue, year after year, be last as it relates to traffic. People sit in their cars, out many hours of the day. So it's important for us to look and seek solutions to our traffic problems in our city. Almost a year ago, I was given the opportunity to bring in a dockless bike share company, whom I had an opportunity to meet through National League of Cities Lime Bikes. And they came to me wanting to start a pilot in my district from Watts to San Pedro. Very successful. It was trending to date. They have over 5,000 users. They were known a year ago as Lime Bike. Today, they're just known as Lime because the fast-moving technology that you're seeing in multimodal industries like Lime has now focused on scooters. You'll start seeing other companies come into play. Cities like San Francisco and Santa Monica, who have embraced dockless vehicles policy in those two respective cities. Just last week, Mr. Weesar, Mr. Price stood with Mayor Garcetti and launched and opened the MyFig LA project, which allows now individuals who can use a bike or scooter safely in a protected bike lane from USC to the downtown Los Angeles area. Very successful. So aside from moving on, embracing multimodal transportation, we need to focus on our infrastructure as well. And the reason why I brought Lime to my district and Mr. Rue embraced a pilot in his district because we have to continue to embrace multimodal transportation that's efficient, that is emissions-free, and that is affordable. What we have before us also, and I represent part of South Los Angeles in Watts, I do want to commend Ms. Martinez and also Mr. Price for seeking equity in the policy that's before us to ensure that everyone in this city has opportunities to use multimodal transportation, not just those that are most popular in our city. Let me also, if I can, I know I'm short on my time, let me also take you back to the early 1900s, where Henry Ford brought the dockless car. And it was then that people were afraid of multi-ton piece of metal coming through our streets. And it was then that we had to figure out, back in the day, over 100 years ago, how to safely move this dockless car system in cities across the country? How to pave roads? How to line the streets? How to bring forth reasonable car regulation, safety, and bringing forth traffic signs and traffic signals? Here we are today. We do know that there are some safety concerns that I've heard as well through my pilot program, and this is why we need to advance efforts and call for more regulations in safety and enforcement moving forward. But I also said in committee, we cannot regulate stupidity. If you use a dockless vehicle, wear your helmet. Abide by the speed limit. Don't ride on sidewalks. Again, the importance of having put forth some rules and regulations is so that we can have a safe city that embraces a multimodal transportation system. I always said, a multimodal system in our city is a successful city. It's also important to give people choices. If they don't want to ride their car, that's fine. I'm not saying we're getting rid of the car system. The cars are here to stay. But if you want to ride transit, you have that choice. If you want to ride your bike, you have that choice. If you want to ride an e-scooter, you'll have that choice. And I know far too well, because it took me two and a half hours to get from San Pedro to here on a multimodal system. I rode my bike to the bus stop, rode the bus stop to the red line, got the red line in here. Took two and a half hours. So again, connectivity is very important. Our public transportation infrastructure is very important, and this is why I've embraced this type of technology in my system, in my district, rather, and it's time to go citywide with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody who's working on this issue. We are indeed trying to move into the future to figure out alternative modes of transportation and to do so in a way that, to bring some regulation and order out of the chaos. Because part of the issue at the beginning is it's been chaotic. We've had a lot of issues in different districts. It hasn't been as big of an issue in my district, but I've been hearing about it of the scooters all over the place, and how do we, how do we bring forward this new transportation alternative, but do it in a responsible way? And I think we've landed on a lot of good things in the Public Works Committee report, along with the Transportation Committee report, and as far as what the program is going to look like. One of the big elements that I think we added in Public Works, which I think is extremely important, has to do with liability, asking for the city attorney to work with us on figuring out how we can make sure that the liability is covered by these scooter companies, and if not, bake into, bake a fee into the cost of this so that that covers the liability. Because we know, at the end of the day, while it's great as you're scootering down the road, there may be a pothole that's perfectly safe for a car, maybe perfectly safe for a bicycle, but a scooter may end up getting caught in that, and someone's going to get injured, and we want to make sure that that doesn't happen, and that if it does happen, that the city is not on the hook so much. Now, the one issue that we still seem to be having a little trouble with has to do with the very narrow period of the 120 days of the conditional permit, of how many scooters to allow. As Mr. Bonin mentioned, in our, in the Public Works Committee, we took a little bit of a Solomon approach. We cut the number in half. We said, the pilot program allows each company to have 3,000. We don't, we were trying to bring some order at it. It's hard for Department of Transportation to manage that number, so we said, we'll cut it in half, 1,500 for these first few months. A number of folks, some of my colleagues, have a lot of concerns about that because they want to make sure that the riders in their community that are using it don't end up with less than they have now. So I wanted to bring up Ms. Reynolds to the table to ask a few questions about the cap and what this means to help us get to the bottom of it, because I know there's a few motions out there trying to decide what this cap would ultimately look like. And one of the motions we were just talking about has to do with reverting back to a time period, June 1, and just using that as the date of how many scooters there are. But the question is, do we have the data to verify how many scooters were by any given company out there on June 1?
Thank you, Councilmember, and the answer is no. We have no independently verified data about the number of scooters or e-bikes that were in the city of Los Angeles on June 1.
So is that, you know, I'm open because I want, I want to work with my colleagues that want to push it, but is that something that could be implemented by going back to that date, or should we pick a number?
So we don't have any way of going back in the Wayback Machine and relying on anything other than the numbers that these companies would provide themselves. And given that it's been difficult to get a single number from either one of them over the course of the time that they've been in Los Angeles, I would have a lot of, we would struggle to give them any number other than the number they give us. And it's very possible that those companies might both give us numbers that exceed the cap contemplated in the full program. For example, Bird gave a number to the press or to the mayor a couple of weeks ago of 15,000. 15,000 exceeds the 10,000 scooter number that is currently contemplated in the full program with deployment in both disadvantaged communities and other neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles. So there's really, we've really sort of given over a fair amount of the ability to regulate to those two companies if we were to allow them to tell us the number that they allege they had on June 1.
So how would you recommend, you know, we have two different ways we landed this plane in terms of the number of the cap in the short term. How would you recommend that we move forward in the short term in terms of the conditional permits in a way that would be equitable? And also equitable to all the companies involved, but also equitable to the riders? And I should point out, one thing I didn't mention, I wanted to mention also, in the motion that Mr. Bonin and I do, put together, there is a provision to continue the existing dockless bike share program in Council District 15 without limiting the number of devices during the conditional use permit because it is a special situation of it being a pilot program. But putting that aside, for the rest of the city, how would you recommend moving forward?
So from my perspective, this is a really important day for the city. Welcoming in new mobility options and innovation means that we need to make sure that we don't artificially manipulate the market. Up until now, the market has kind of been proceeding between actors who are willing to operate and deploy, even in spite of a city policy that they not, and actors who have been waiting their turn. I think that this day is a day we should turn the corner, and we should open it up so that everyone can come in for a conditional permit. And then what that magic number is of how many, you know, devices they can have in Los Angeles, you know, maybe it's 3,000 with some additional number allowed in disadvantaged communities, but not up to the full 10,000, or maybe it's just the floor establishing that everybody can come in at the floor, which is 3,000 devices. And then after that, it's really contingent on those companies, how quickly they pull their equity plans together, how fast they do their outreach, how quickly they fully comply with the city's mobility data specifications for them to be able to have the full permit. I think it's worth noting that the city of Santa Monica received applications to operate scooters from 13 different companies. So if we had 13 companies able to deploy, or even half that number, 3,000 scooters, I'm not sure that from a user perspective, you would experience that big of a drop in the number of scooters. You would just experience a drop in the number of scooters from one or two companies.
And I guess it's imperative for us to make sure that we create incentive to have people go through that process. We don't want to be in a dynamic where people get more scooters by going slow on the process. Although I guess maybe that doesn't impact us as much because after 120 days, if you don't have a license, then you get nothing. Is that correct?
That's right. And if you, and if you go through...
Press your button again, Mr. Blumenfield.
Okay, I'll sit down. But you can finish answering the question. Sorry, go ahead.
I think that that's, that's a really important thing for us to all be eyes wide open on, is that 120 days, everybody baselines back to 3,000 in the high-demand areas. is that 120 days, everybody baselines back to 3,000 in the high-demand areas. So we're talking about just opening it up to everyone in that period of 120 days.
Thank you.
Okay. What I'm going to do is call on Mr. O'Farrell. Then I'm going to open a public comment up, Mr. City Attorney, for about 10 to 12 minutes. But Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I might have a question or two as well. But I want to think, between Joe and Mike and Bob, I think you conveyed the reality of this disruptive technology and the innovative approach to these companies to give us additional mobility options quite well. And it's something that we're grappling with and also conveying the need to make sure that we can land on regulations that will keep people safer, even when they're so attracted to this really fun way of getting around. I have yet to see anyone wear a helmet, so I hope that more riders will wear helmets. And I see plenty of people, you know, tandem on sidewalks with no helmets as well. So there's an issue in terms of sidewalks. But focusing in on the conditional period, the conditional period, if we delete the recommendation in relation to the condition permit to all companies with a cap of 1,500 vehicles and with a following revision in relation to the fleet size and service area, do we not then exclude any other company from entering into applying for this conditional period? Because only Bird and Lime were existing before that June date, correct?
That's correct. So you would basically just allow and legitimize the operators that were operating in spite of the city's moratorium, but not allow any of their competitors into the market?
Right. So, I mean, colleagues, I would prefer not to take part in allowing a monopoly of two companies, one of which has really, in my view, my opinion, been a bad operator, not just in Los Angeles, but across the country, dumping these motorized scooters in major metropolitan areas across the country and then selling hundreds of millions of dollars of stock so they can have an IPO, successful IPO. Again, I'm giving my opinion. I'm not asking yours on that one. Be that as it may, I can definitely walk back my feelings on this, but I would strongly recommend that we not delete the cap and substitute June 1st, 2018, as the date of the disclosure in relation to the conditional period. Because otherwise, we're giving a very unfair advantage to two companies in particular.
That's correct.
And I don't think we should be party to that, colleagues. And then I seconded the motion brought forward by Mr. Blumenfield and Mr. Bonin that calls for the various reports back in terms of the geo, what do we have, the geo fencing, thank you, the geo fence, et cetera. That's important. And I appreciate the committee's sense of urgency to move these forward, you know, this process forward so that we can land quickly on something that will ensure greater safety. And Mr. Buzcaino is right, we cannot regulate, you know, stupidity in terms of the way people choose to drive or operate any moving vehicle, much less a car. We can only put up so many speed bumps and stop signs and traffic signals. And if at the end of the day, the operator chooses to ignore everything and look at their, you know, iPhone instead and drive reckless, that's going to be an issue regardless. But what the city can do, what government can do, is institute rules and regulations that are sensible, reasonable, logical, without favoring two particular companies that never played by the rules. We should enable other companies to step up and play by the rules that we are providing. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kocorian. And then I'm going to go to public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for touching upon some of the very issues that I was going to raise. I think first, with regard to the change in competition, it seems to me that we ought to be welcoming new competitors into this market if we're going to do this at all. Because there's no reason to assume that the two incumbents provide the greatest safety, provide the greatest relief from adverse impacts on our neighborhoods. And companies that are out there and have complied with our moratorium might in fact be able to be better corporate citizens than the two that we've been dealing with already. So I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, Mr. O'Farrell. I just want to touch on Mr. Buzcaino's point about not regulating stupidity. Because that's what the Department of Transportation does every day. We try to regulate the most stupid behavior imaginable under any set of circumstances. It's not always easy to do, whether we're talking about pedestrians, bicyclists, or motorists. But that is what the Department of Transportation does. We plan for stupidity and we try to protect people from their own stupidity every single day. We have to try to do that with regard to these new technologies as well. We have 100 people a day in this country dying in car crashes. So with new technologies come new risks, and it's incumbent upon us to regulate that. So I would suggest a few things as we consider this. First of all, I think we have to have some reliable means of enforcement. And I haven't really heard any discussion about that yet today. I hope we will. Because it's nice to have a regulatory scheme, but unless we have staffing and current ability to enforce this, we're going to have to deal with the consequences of people's stupidity and their ignoring our regulations, unless we have some way to do otherwise that I haven't heard yet. Connected with that, if we're going to have robust enforcement, we need to have a clear fee study and revenue options that are going to pay for that enforcement. Because I am not willing to have other services to our constituents be cut because of general fund impacts of our having to enforce stupidity of people who are riding these scooters. So we have to have assurance that all costs related to this are fully captured by fees as part of this regulatory scenario. And related to that, the risk management part of this is very important to me as well. Mr. Blumenfield touched upon on this, and I think we need to even go the extra mile. There's a million-dollar insurance requirement in here. To me, that's not enough. I think it should be $5 million. That will cost the operators of these companies almost nothing to increase the policy limit to $5 million, but it will provide a great deal of extra assurance that we won't be the deep pocket that gets sued when the first major injury comes down on this. And in addition to that, I think in the Public Works Report, recommendation number three that requests the city attorney to report on potential legal liabilities and so on, part of that report should include language requiring all operators of these vehicles to fully release the city and to waive any claims against the city in language that the city attorney deems appropriate to fully protect the taxpayers of Los Angeles. So those would be a few of my recommendations at this point, Mr. President, and I'm looking forward to hearing more, especially about the enforcement part.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, let me open up a public comment for about, let's start off with about 11, 12 minutes. Do we have a Ruthann Rosenek, a Jason, and a Brittany Ansley?
And as the speakers make their way forward, Mr. President, amending motions 29C and 29D have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Go ahead, ma'am. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Ruthann Rosenek, and I particularly want to thank the comments that I just heard from, oh, okay. Good morning. My name is Ruthann Rosenek, and I'm in Councilman Corrigan's district. Unfortunately, he's not here today. I wanted to thank, with great appreciation, the comments of Councilwoman Corian and O'Farrell. You have addressed several of the things that I'd like to speak about today in my time. I am against the passage of this amendment or bill right now in its present status because of two key items that I think are missing. The first is the absence of police enforcement of the existing vehicle codes. And the second is an issue of liability. The existing vehicle codes, which are applicable to e-scooters, are not being enforced, in particular, the illegal use of e-scooters on both commercial and residential sidewalks. The absence...
Thank you. That's your minutes? I need Jason. I need Brittany. I need Sam, I think it's Sam Drayman. I need Mr. Previn. Yes?
Hello. I'm Brittany Angley, and I'm against the scooters since they have come out. I'm a runner. I'm a marathon runner, and I run on the streets. I've been sexually assaulted twice by people on these bikes who come up behind me and slap me as hard as they can, and they take off. I call the police, and no one comes for at least an hour. I don't feel safe in my city. I don't feel safe to go running anymore because of these attacks that have happened to me. They also pose a threat to any children that are on the sidewalks, any animals that are, people that are walking, their animals, because they all ride on the sidewalk and they're going 20, 30 miles an hour, and someone's going to get seriously hurt. So I'm very against these scooters.
Thank you. So do we have Previn, Mr. Previn? And Jason? Come on down. Jason, are you Jason? Is your name Jason?
Yes.
Or Sam?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Previn, listen to these guys. Yes, identify.
Hello, council members. My name is Sam Dryman. I'm with Lime. I'd like to thank you all for embracing mobility. We've been working very closely with LADOT and many of the council members on making sure that this is rolled out in a responsible and proper way. We are very excited that LA is taking a forward step in this new mobility age that we're in. We hope that the service continues to be provided. There are thousands of people currently dependent on scooters, thousands of people employed to provide and maintain the service. And we are currently engaging many community groups across the city of Los Angeles to educate them on how to properly ride, park, and introduce them to Lime. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I could get Mr. Herman, I'm not going to tell you again. So if I can get David Boring, is there a Jonathan Berlou, and a David Estrada? Mr. Herman, please sit down. Yes, Mr. Previn?
Mr. Wesson, please sit down. This is Eric Previn, and I just wanted to let you know that this is an important subject. And the liability piece, I think we all have to remember the case of YAO, Y-A-O, the case of Gabat, and the case of Godfrey. These are bicyclists who bumped into the road, fell over, and were injured. $20 million right there. So if we get 13 companies at the 10,000 cap, at the 130 per sco, we're looking at about $20 million in revenue. So that'll cover a couple of accidents. But the liability coverage of $5 million is a good idea to increase it. But I just tell you, on a moral basis, I'm very worried about inventing a new format in which people are going to regularly get hurt. And I just don't know how we're going to bring our infrastructure up to the standard where at night and in various ways, you're not going to tumble off these things. Never mind the fact that there's no place to put them. And in the regions where they've tried them, you've had angry mobs trying to tear them down. Now, you know, I'm sympathetic. I do not like the idea that LADOT has so much power because they've been terrible about the process of preferential parking districts and other data that they should be sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. So please, sir, come and identify yourself.
My name is David Boring. I have a shop in Venice Beach on the corner of Pacific and Washington. I'm pretty much ground zero for the scooters. I met with Bird about five months ago and said I could be a safety center, hand out helmets, you know, you wouldn't take any of my business away. They promptly said no. Because I'm ground zero at the shop, I see this type of stuff every day. These are two young kids riding the scooters. There's probably 10 or 12 of them doing it a day. There's no stopgap measures in place for it. You haven't put any in. And if you don't do it in a real responsible manner, everybody knows the city is going to be sued continuously. I put numbers on the bottom here because if a scooter has a number on it, and it's large and legible, and they ride on the sidewalk, or a 10-year-old kid rides it, you can take a picture, send it to the city, and they can find the company. I need help. I'm on the corner getting overrun by the guy that do business this far from my doorway all day long. So I don't know what to say.
Thank you for coming down. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm David Estrada, head of public policy for Bird. So we want to urge council to adopt the Transportation Committee report and preserve the status quo and direct DOT to promptly allow new entrants to enter by starting their pilot program. The idea that new entrants will instantly come in and fill the void if we do cap the existing operators to a much, much lower number than the scooters they have on the road is not supported by the facts. There were 13 applicants who applied to operate in Santa Monica. Almost none of them have actually ever operated an e-scooter program anywhere in the country. Lyft was one of them. They actually received a permit. They also received a permit in Denver a month ago, a month ago. They have not started operations yet. They're not capable yet. One of them, Razor, started operations recently in Long Beach. They had to promptly stop because they couldn't operate their program. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can get Russell Howes, Daniela Delafaye? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Jonathan Lee Berlou. Citizen of District 10, which I believe makes me a constituent of yours, Councilman Wesson. I live in Koreatown, and Bird has virtually made the borders of my neighborhood, all the way from Hollywood in the north to the Fairfax District in the west, to Echo Park in the east, to Expo Park in the south. It has made the city a much bigger, livable place for me. I am of the belief that a community only makes progress through its citizens' ability to communicate and freely exchange ideas with each other. To severely cap the limit on e-scooters would be to severely cap our citizens' ability to freely exchange information and ideas with each other. And it would be severely capping the rate at which our city makes progress and maintains its position as a world leader and an international city of progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Delafaye, I believe?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. I also just want to express how sad it makes me that people communicate to you using that kind of language. And I just want to say hello to everyone, and I too am against the cap on these, on the Birds and on the Limes, just because I do believe that people have the right to exercise free will, just like a child could take their mother's car that's underage. I mean, it's the same way that Lime already has an effect legally, that they have to consent, that you have to be above 18, and that you have to wear a helmet. And whether you decide to or not is completely up to your own free will and judgment. And it's already illegal to drive electric vehicles on the sidewalk, so you can already get pulled over for that. And they also enhance, I work, I live three miles away from my work, and I get to ride that, and I really enjoy it, and I'm just in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And I'm looking for Vivian Rascalvo. And you are?
My name is Russ. I live in Mar Vista. I want to thank Councilmember Kocorian for bringing up some of the safety issues that were not brought up in Transportation or Public Works Committee. I also want to thank the Public Safety Committee for bringing those issues up. LADOT also did not bring up these issues sufficiently in their report.
Wait a minute, let me hold his time. Mr. Kim, you have to sit down. Nobody called you. You have to sit down. Nobody called you. You two can leave, so just relax. Let's start all over. Give him his time.
Start all over? Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Russ. I live in Mar Vista, like I mentioned. Thanks again to Mr. Kocorian. Safety issues have not been sufficiently dealt with in the Transportation and Public Works Committee. They have not been sufficiently dealt with in a DOT report, and these regulations are not ready to be passed. They need to be sent back for further traffic safety regulations, possibly with input by LAPD. LAPD does not have the means to handle the load of safety laws that are violated daily without participation from the companies. Just ask an LAPD officer. The consequences of scooter company negligence is visible every day in beach path congestion, injuries, and property damage. Bird, in particular, shows contempt for the law and for city policies, as has been mentioned. Each day, they place scooters on the boardwalk and beach paths with no sidewalks written in small print in the scooters. They know nobody's going to pay attention to that. Their Instagram has dozens of images of people illegally riding on the beach path. They don't care. They should not be given preferential treatment for a pilot. Honestly, they should be excluded from the pilot entirely. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Sargent, he's been worn all day. Mr. Gus, you're after -- you're, let's remove Mr. Herman. Mr. Gus, you're after Ms. Rascal. You're doing cat calls and sounds, you're doing cat counts, calls and sounds.
So Mr. Herman is shouting out now, but during the last speaker and the speakers before, he's been moving constantly, waving papers, trying to distract us from actually focusing on speakers on this important issue. And making noise.
Ma'am, you should just -- oh, it's, just wait a minute, because it's gonna get a little weird for a while.
Let's wait till Mr. Herman is out before the speaker begins. Indeed, a member of the public is waiting because Mr. Herman has decided to walk slowly backwards, shouting, slowing down the meeting.
No, no, go, okay. He's continuing to disrupt.
And he's shouting as he goes out, as usual. Okay, and he's still shouting.
Vivian, I didn't realize that was you. I think you're clear, so go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Vivian Rascalvo, and I'm here on behalf of the Central City Association of Los Angeles. We'd like to thank the members of the Transportation Committee, Public Works and Game Reduction Committees, as well as LADOT for this responsiveness and engagement with CCA on this very important mobility issue. We're excited to welcome dockless stations, vehicles into downtown and hope we can improve this pilot today. This, as well as the CarShare pilot which you approved earlier, will give people safe, affordable, convenient alternatives to using a car for most trips. This is especially important in downtown, where we want to encourage people not to use cars. We'd also respectfully request that you consider the 12 miles per hour instead of the 15 miles per hour limit, or, I'm sorry, that you reconsider the 15 miles per hour instead of the 12 miles per hour. We think the 15 miles per hour limit is recommended would be better than.
Thank you. Mr. Gus, you're the last speaker.
Well, I agree completely with Mitch O'Farrell, completely, about these companies being bad actors on the West Side. I completely agree with Mr. Krikorian about liability. But right now, there's no need to even run a pilot program. Santa Monica's doing that with these companies for 16 months. What is the rush into doing a pilot program? Right now, council members, can you tell me, will these devices be allowed on the Sepulveda Pass? Will they be allowed in playgrounds? Will they be allowed in the subway, or on on-ramps, or off-ramps? If you can't answer those questions now, you're begging for lawsuits. You have not thought this thing completely through. What happens if we have a few hundred of these in the Sepulveda Pass? What's the consequence? This is the juvenilization of the city. Don't allow it waiting to see how the Santa Monica goes.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment. Mr. Bonin, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks, everybody, for the testimony from the public and the questions from the council. Mr. Blumenfield and I are, in a moment, gonna be submitting an additional amending motion to address a number of the concerns that we've heard and build upon them and incorporate them into the recommendations. That motion will be, will incorporate our previous motion and just do it as an omnibus motion. It'll be 29E, which should circulate in a moment. It will effectively approve the items in 29C, which moves the Public Works Committee report with some cleanups and report backs. It will, at Mr. Krikorian's request and the suggestion of others, increase the required liability insurance from 1 million to 5 million. It will, at Mr. Krikorian's suggestion, require the operators, and by operators, I'm signing right now, by operators, I would indicate that is the companies and those using the vehicles to waive any liability on the part of the city of Los Angeles. It would add CD4 to the areas without a limit during the pre-pilot period. And it would increase the number of vehicles allowed per company from the Public Works Committee report recommendation for the pre-pilot, the conditional period, from 1,500 to 3,000. So there is an open question that you will hear in the remainder of our discussion about whether or not to have a conditional period where every company is allowed to have 3,000 vehicles, which is what will be in the Blumenfield and Bonin recommendation. Or, I believe, Mr. Buscagino and Mr. Rue will have something which will limit it only to Bird and to Lime, but will allow them to have effectively, according to Ms. Reynolds, since there's no data, an unlimited number during the conditional period. So we want to be sure that we are fair to all companies and not playing favorites, and we want to make sure that we are not limiting the options of people who are currently using. So the 3,000 figure is effectively the base cap that would be allowed under the permanent or under the pilot, and so the conditional uses the same number. So that'll be item 29C, which will be circulated in just a minute. We just signed it.
Mr. Bonin, whose amendment is dealing with reviewing revenue generation for the city?
That, from your office, is incorporated in 29's E as well.
All right. Okay.
And it's part of the base, it's part of the public works base.
Yes. It's part of the public workspace as well, and then we have an additional report back on some additional stuff that you've asked for. So we would be asking for a yes vote on 29E and a no vote on the rest of the stuff.
Okay, no, I got you. Relax, relax. Relax, David, relax. Mr. Rue, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to Councilman Bonin's motion, on 29C, item three, we are adding Council District 15 and four, but can we add one word? It says authorize LADOT to continue the existing or new, actually two words, or new dockless bike share pilot programs in District 15 and four. Or new pilot projects.
Okay. You may want to do a sidebar on that, Mr. Rue, with Mr. Bonin. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the chairs of the committee that have helped bring this issue to where it is, where it feels like we're close to being baked. Also, I'd like to especially call out our colleague, Councilmember Martinez, working to make sure there's some level of equity for ridership. The question that I would raise with everything that I've heard today is, it sounds like we're creating a scenario where businesses that exist now obviously have a definite advantage, but if we cap that number, new businesses that form later, as this industry develops, would have a difficult time getting in. Without having studied it, I will confess to not knowing this, I can imagine the participation of women and minority business owners is low or nonexistent. So I'd want to have some type of study that I think the Department of Transportation can lead to help us figure out a way to make sure not only can people equitably ride bikes and spend their money with these companies, but they can equitably actually be in the business and be in the ownership side of it. And so I'd offer that to my colleagues as an addition to what's been put forward.
Friendly. Okay, Mr. Buscagino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Somebody just appeared on my Twitter feed that disruptive technologies equals disruptive policymaking. So, oh, was that you, Mike? Didn't see that. I didn't see you. Oh, somebody, so, by the way, Mr. Bonin, copyright that, and taking credit for that. But nonetheless, so colleagues, you know, as I mentioned earlier, as it relates to companies, Lime, scooter, scoot, skeet, scat, whatever, it's important for us to let the marketplace determine what works best for our city and our neighborhoods. But it's also important to embrace, again, a multimodal city. And limiting the number of vehicles does not do just that. So I want to ask Ms. Alita Reynolds to come to the table. She mentioned earlier, Alita, about the 3,000 cap. I know you mentioned to me here offline, but can you explain to the council where you came up with that 3,000 cap? What was your thought process with that 3,000 cap? Same question we had with the miles per hour, how far or fast the scooter should go? Should it be 12, 15, 22? But for me, it's, you know, can you just answer that as far as that 3,000 number?
So 3,000 is the number that Transportation Committee debated and determined. DOT gave several recommended alternatives. And just to clarify, 3,000 is the floor. So per the full guidelines, every company that conducts its outreach that meets all the conditions of the permit can have up to 10,000 devices in the city of Los Angeles if they deploy those other devices in low-income communities and specifically concentrated in low-income communities in the San Fernando Valley. So 3,000 is the floor citywide for each individual company, but low-income communities and deployment of service hours in those low-income communities rapidly increases the cap for each of those companies. I think that for us, you're absolutely right, there is no magic number. We don't know what the magic number is yet. And so what's included in those regulations is the opportunity for DOT to work with those companies on how many rides per day each of those devices is getting, and to increase or decrease that cap on a dynamic basis based on the use of the fleet. So one of the things that we haven't discussed very much is the shelf life of a scooter. The shelf life of a scooter, according to Lime, is four months. So if you think about 10,000 scooters, a fleet of 10,000 per company, let's assume there's 10 companies that can provide that level, or maybe even six or seven, we've got that entire fleet turning over and being disposed of in some way every four months, three times a year. So for us, we were trying to make sure that, we're trying to hold the line on devices that are really being used, that are meeting a demand versus devices that are out there to provide advertising for the companies.
Appreciate that insight. In San Francisco, what was their cap? Do we know? Santa Monica, what was their cap? Do we know?
So Santa Monica, city of San Francisco is quite low. I think it's 1,500 total.
For the two companies that came in?
Yes. And they limited the number of permits as well. So we're not limiting the number of permits.
No limit on permits.
Santa Monica also limited the number of permits to two originally, but they've now given out four. And they also have a dynamic cap, similar to the one we have, that can raise or lower based on the use of the fleet.
Got it. So let me play the advocate of the rider, of the user. You know, if we are gonna be a city that encourages people to get out of their cars and into bikes or scooters and connect our expanding rail line, we cannot talk cap here. I understand the concerns that we had from councils and some of our colleagues on the amount of, the number of vehicles that are gonna be left, but this is why we're moving forward in the rules and regulations, where to park them, how far to go, and how many are allowed. So I'd like to amend, a verbal amendment on 29D to revise, if you look at sub-bullet one on 29D, colleagues, if I can direct your attention to 29D, and I'd ask for a second, to revise recommendation 1C in the Public Works and Game Reduction Committee report that would open the condition permit to all companies, including those that have been on the sidelines waiting and inching their way and thirsting to get into the city to use scooters and other dockless vehicles, to provide all companies with a cap of 6,000 vehicles and strike the subsection, sub-bullet two in 29D. I'd like for a second. Thank you, Mr. Rue.
I didn't hear.
Again, colleagues, if we truly want to get people out of their cars, we have to embrace and encourage people not to limit them from using multimodal transportation in our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krikorian, are you back on the queue?
Yes. As long as Ms. Reynolds is there.
Wait a minute, David, were you?
Ms. Reynolds?
Okay, so I'm sorry. Mr. Rue?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Krikorian.
I'm getting my steps in.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. Equity is very important to me. But in this case, we didn't act fast enough. Industry, technology, as we've seen, is moving exponentially, and we're trying to catch up, which is why I fully support Councilmember Buscagino's revision. And I ask for a I-vote because we do not want to impede progress.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian?
Well, I suppose it depends on what we mean by progress. Because what happens with disruptive technologies often is the reason that they are disruptive and the reason that they become successful so that they can have initial public offerings that make a few people billionaires is because they evade safety standards, evade workers' support, evade the kind of regulatory scenario that we've applied to every other industry for over 100 years in this country. And when somebody comes along and they want to plunk down a bunch of money to litter our streets and sidewalks with whatever new device it is that they're coming up with so that they can take that to Wall Street and say, "Look at how great we're doing," no, I'm sorry, I do want to impede that kind of progress. I want to impede that kind of progress long enough to be able to make sure we're keeping people safe and that we're making sure that we have good corporate citizens who are running these businesses. So that brings me back to my enforcement question. Because, Ms. Reynolds, you just terrified me a minute ago when you talked about these scooters having a shelf life of three or four months, and the number of operators being maybe 10, I don't know, maybe it's six, maybe it's 12, we don't know. And then if we're going to now lift the cap even beyond the cap that was recommended in this report, and you multiply that by the number of operators, and then you think about those scooters having to be taken off the streets every three or four months, presumably by you, or sanitation, or someone else, how that gets done, how we have enough people to do that, what we do with the refuse that's left behind by these companies, that, by the way, includes hazardous waste in every single one of them, and so we have to figure out who's gonna pay for that disposal, that really concerns me in terms of its enormous cost to the taxpayers of Los Angeles. Taxes that are not borne by these entrepreneurs who are taking that, you know, business case to Wall Street. And so I'd like to know, how do my constituents avoid having to pay for those costs, number one? And number two, how are you going to enforce any of these regulations?
So I appreciate the question, and I'll give a two-part answer. One, the reason why we care so passionately about the mobility data specifications that we are requiring is that they are unlike any other data specifications that cities have required to date. To date, what cities have done is digest information that the companies have given to them voluntarily, and then sent lots of folks out into the field to try and verify and validate that information. Our data specifications are different. They require those companies to integrate with our tech, with our APIs, and we plan to use that as a way to hold them accountable and actually enforce all of the provisions that we are putting forth in the permanent regulations, including the state of good repair of the fleet. It should not be incumbent upon the city to go out and collect and dispose of those excess scooters, or scooters that are not working, or scooters that are inoperable. Those companies need to take on that onus, and that is part of what we expect to enforce using the mobility data specifications. That's why they're so important. And they're important not just for how we regulate scooters, but how we regulate every new mobility company that comes in afterwards. The challenge, as you've rightfully pointed out, is that it is not the Department of Transportation that is empowered to go out and collect and confiscate and, you know, dispose of scooters that are parked incorrectly, scooters that are in excess of the number that are out there. And I think that is an open question and one that we will need to contemplate as we determine what the appropriate fees are. determine what the appropriate fees are for these companies to pay, potentially on a per-ride basis or a per-device basis, to fund the real sort of enforcement burden that will be borne by sanitation and by LAPD. And so that, again, is why holding the bar high on data becomes really critical for us to do our jobs properly. But I think that there is a request from Councilmember Bonin for us also to come back with a report on what is the appropriate density of these devices, right? It's one thing to say, "We want innovation at all costs." It's another thing to say, "We want to manage the public realm and the public good and the public right-of-way." And I think that figuring out what the right density of devices is will get us, start moving us in a direction of making an informed decision about what is the right number.
So if we do go forward with this program, you'll be able to gather data about cost as well. And when we come back with a fee study, it will be a robust fee study that will capture all of those costs and recommend what an appropriate fee would be for these companies to operate.
Yes.
That will encompass all of the things I mentioned and more.
Yes, and what the right vehicle that is. Is it a permit, or might it be a franchise? That would allow us to consider and contemplate different revenue structures than a permit program will.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me see if I can try to get us close to wrapping up on this one. So just one note before I start. In item 29E, item seven says require a $5 commercial general liability, I want that to be $5 million, just to be clear. So colleagues, we've discussed a number of aspects of this, and again, we come down basically to a discussion about what to do in the interim period during 120 days. So I think back to the story I read my son about Goldilocks and about there being one bed that's too hard, one bed that's too soft, and one bed that's just right. There's no bed that's just right, but banning them all completely for 120 days is too hard. Raising the cap above 3,000 is too soft and actually undoes the equity incentive because it allows it to be a higher level before they start going to other parts of the city. It actually allows them to go higher than what will be under the permanent permit or the pilot program. So there is a bed that is almost just right. It's still kind of lumpy because this is a disruptive technology and it's an emerging phenomenon, and that is why it is a pilot. And we will be getting regular reports on this, report backs on a number of different things, and changing things as we go and modifying based on the data that we have. And again, the important things to note about this program that are different from the struggle happening in other cities, that we did differently, is there's an equity component in ours. I haven't heard a lot of talk in some of our neighboring cities that are struggling with this about an equity component to make sure that all neighborhoods get served and to make sure that, as Mr. Harris Dawson points out, all neighborhoods have an opportunity to get a piece of the action. And the other component that's very important here is the data sharing. We want the data, we want to own the data, we want to be able to use the data to revise our rules and to plan multimodal transportation around the city of Los Angeles. So in order to achieve the equity, we have to have that cap of no more than 3,000 during the pre-pilot conditional period. Because otherwise, it screws up the long-term program and it begins to undo a lot of the work we want to do setting the stage for the equity. So along with Mr. Blumenfield, respectfully ask that we approve 29E and disapprove the other items. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfield, and I think I have Mr. Kocorian for again, again, and then maybe Mr. Buscayeno. Mr. Blumenfield.
I wanted to echo what Mr. Bonin said. We started out this way, we landed in committee on 1,500 as the cap for this conditional use, not conditional, for the conditional permit. Going up to 3,000 is tough for me because I'm worried about the excess amount and the equity for all these companies, but I'm willing to go there based on our discussion and my colleagues' needs, especially since we're also, as part of that, we're making it unlimited in the two districts that have the pilot programs. So they don't have a cap at all, but for the rest of the city to have a cap makes sense to me. I actually prefer 1,500, but I'm willing to do the 3,000. That's why we did this joint amendment. But to go beyond that to the 6,000 is a bridge too far. 6,000 is a higher base number than we have in the actual pilot program. The actual pilot program is 3,000 as a baseline. And then they get to adjust for social equity areas, and then they get to adjust based on usage, which makes sense so that the Department of Transportation has this dynamic number that they can increase or decrease based on the reality. But for me, 6,000 is a bridge too far, and so sadly, I cannot support it, although I appreciate my colleagues raising that and understand their desire to see this go unlimited. I'm generally a big fan of disruptive technologies, but I'm also a big fan of public safety and trying to keep order among the chaos. And we have got to figure out how to move this forward in a responsible way, and I think going any beyond 3,000 is beyond responsible from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to close my comments, first of all, by thanking our committee chairs for this work, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Blumenfield. This is really detailed, complicated, difficult policymaking, and I think the way that you have led this, that you have both led this through your respective committees and the debate on the floor has been the kind of policymaking that we should do. So thank you both for that. Mr. Bonin, you spoke to equity, a number of members have spoken to equity, and I don't have a specific amendment or anything that I want to propose at this point, but I would also hope that as we talk about equity, we remember that equity includes our disabled community, it includes our elder community, it includes children in this city. And as we have looked at ways to encourage bicycling, for example, we have looked at all of those things. And we've tried to figure out how we can encourage bicycling among those demographic groups as well. Electric scooters are much less susceptible to that, unless there are things that can be done that I haven't seen yet. But I hope that that will be part of this discussion as well. How do we make these new technologies more accessible to communities that are less physically capable than the people who are utilizing them now? Needs to be an important part of this as well. So thank you very much.
Okay, and before I call on Mr. Buscayeno, I want to just thank Ms. Martinez because where it relates to this conversation, Justin, move. I can't. I can't. I'm trying. We're going to have to, members, we're going to have to begin to have a conversation about equity on everything. Everything moving forward, everything. We had a robust conversation not too long ago, but that was the beginning, it's not over. So I just really, really want to say, thank you for making sure that we had this conversation. Because as we look at new industries and new businesses, if we're really going to look at fairness and trying to turn the city around, equity is going to have to be involved in every conversation. So I just wanted to, on the record, thank you, because I know that you led the charge on that. Mr. Buscayeno to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the mere reason, the number one reason why I embrace the dockless bike in my district, we actually launched it in Watts. Because if we can have dockless technology on the West Side and other affluent areas in the city, we can have it in South Los Angeles. And I appreciate the policy that's moving forward on embracing equity on this issue. Colleagues, if, you know, technology is coming, whether we like it or not. E-scooters today, Mr. Kocorian, hoverboards tomorrow. I, we don't know what's next. But I appreciate the spirited debate and the dialogue and discussion, but be sure to wear a helmet. And elbow pads, right. But nonetheless, when we talk about throwing out a number, I know Ms. Reynolds said 10,000 was the ceiling, 3,000 was the floor. Mr. Rue, thank you for seconding that verbal amendment, that 6,000 figure of the vehicles coming in, dockless vehicles coming in, in the next 120 days, as Mike said, this is just a conditional permit for the next 120 days. I'm hoping we don't need 120 days. Salita, maybe in the next 30 days?
Yeah? Like, yes? It's on that.
So get the equity plan, to the message to the companies, as Salita reminds us, get your information over. We are willing, we're waiting to get your permits forward and move forward on your permit. So I do want to, again, recognize the work that's been done. Colleagues, when we leave council chambers today, we know moving forward, we're going to have policies, rules, regulations in place, including the next 120 days with conditional permit, and that is a win for the city. A win for the city is embracing a multimodal city that people have choices, people have options as it relates to public transportation. So applaud all of our efforts here. We may disagree on how we move forward on specific issues, but I want to recognize the leadership of this council moving forward and embracing this type of technology and supporting a city that offers choices as it relates to public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayeno. All right. Madam Clerk, we're going to have to take, I think, three votes. Why don't you walk us through those? I think we're going to need a little clarification on an amendment suggested by Mr. Rue, and there may be a couple of other things. So walk us through where we are. The first vote.
The first vote will be on motion 29D as amended by the verbal motion from Buscayeno-Rue. The second vote will be on amending motion 29E, and the third vote will be on the entire matter as amended.
Okay, now, Mr. City Attorney, on 29D.
Yes.
Do we need clarification on 29D?
Well, I'll...
Just on 29D?
Yeah, I just want to read in what I understood the amendment to be.
Is this on 29D?
Yes, D as in dog.
Go ahead.
So the first, in the first bullet point, the word "delete" is being scratched and the word "revise" is being inserted. The cap is being changed from 1,500 to 6,000, and the second bullet point is being deleted in its entirety. Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay, so if I have that right, Mr. Buscayeno and Rue are asking for an "I" vote. Mr. Bonin and Mr. Blumenfield are asking for a "no" vote. So if we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Four "I's, nine "no's."
Okay, now, no, Mr. Spindler, sergeants, remove Mr. Spindler. He's been warned all day. No, Mr. Spindler, go on. Sergeants, show him the back. Okay, the next vote, the next vote, Madam Clerk, is?
The next vote will be on amending motion 29E.
29 what? I didn't hear that. I was being, it was, I could not hear because of the disruption caused by Mr. Spindler. So now, what was that again?
Can we wait just a few minutes because I think we're going to not be able to hear again until Mr. Spindler actually leaves the room?
He's continuing.
Because he's still shouting from the back.
Okay, so now, what was, the next vote is?
29E as an elephant. So there are two things on that. So I understand that on number seven, a word was omitted, the word "million," so that correction is in there. Also, the word "million," yeah? And Mr. Rue had made an oral amendment to 29C, which I don't think got carried over, but I think you intended it to. So on number three, on 29E as an elephant, after the word existing, it was going to have the word "or new." So those are the corrections or amendments to that. Do we need a vote for adding the word "or new," Erica?
That would be then 29E as amended by the clarifications made by the City Attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen "I's."
Okay, and the next and last, I believe?
This is now item 29 as amended by 29E.
All right. On this item, please open the, are there any more clarifications, Mr. City Attorney?
For clarification, this 29E amends both the Transportation and the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee reports that are on the agenda for item number 29.
Okay, let us vote. Please open the roll. Wait a minute.
Reports having to do with the miles per hour. And in the Public Works Report, item B, we had amended it to 15 miles an hour, and that was the joint report that we signed off on the amendments.
It's approving the Public Works Committee report as opposed to the Transportation Committee report.
Right, so it shouldn't be approving, it's approving the Public Works Committee report, which incorporates the Transportation Committee report into it and amending that. So I think we have to adopt B, and E is the amendment to what the underlying provision.
Walk us through that.
Thank you for that clarification. Then 29E as amended amends only B, which is the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee's report on the agenda.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen "I's.
Okay, what is before this body?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred, announcements, members, announcements. If everybody could please rise, everyone in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning. Motion, please rise. I am looking to my left side, Mr. Weezer's side, Mr. Buscayeno's side, I don't see any adjourning. Motion's on that side. I'm looking to the right, if I could get some silence. Shh. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of weeks ago, very, very suddenly, and to everyone's surprise, in Echo Park, we lost a really great friend, Pete Lassen. And he's referred to by many as Echo Park's mightiest oak. A good friend of the park and a longtime resident of Echo Park, Peter Lawrence Lassen, passed away peacefully in his sleep on August 8th. He was 78. A neighborhood fixture and champion of good causes, Pete will be remembered by all who knew him for his broad smile and hearty laughter. He spread joy everywhere he went and gave so much of himself to everyone. His list of committees and community commitments was exhaustive, so much so that I don't even dare try to mention them all here today. Born August 22nd, 1939, at Good Samaritan Hospital, Pete was a native Angelino and spent most of his life here, graduating from St. Olaf College in Northfield, Minnesota. In the 1960s, while serving in the U.S. Army, Pete sustained a lower spinal cord injury, thus making him a paraplegic. After his convalescence, he relocated to Washington, D.C., taking a job as Executive Director of the Paralyzed Veterans of America, where he continued to advocate for people with disabilities and worked for the Veterans Administration, developing accessible standards for all. Pete Lassen helped draft the Americans with Disabilities Act. This led to his studying architecture, receiving a master's degree in architecture from the University of North Carolina in Raleigh. Returning to Los Angeles in the 1980s, Pete set about solving every problem he saw, and I can personally attest to that, from our 16-year-long friendship. He worked on designing and developing housing for the homeless and teamed up with at-risk youth, planting over 15,000 trees all over Los Angeles with the L.A. Conservation Corps. A member of the Steering Committee for the Citizens Committee to save Allegiant Park for 26 years, he consulted on a number of park projects, especially in ensuring that the mobility challenged have access to all areas of the park. He taught handicapped accessibility in the Landscape Architecture Program at UCLA Extension for a decade. He was, although he lived within the Council District One, he was definitely a constituent of Gil Sadio, he knew no boundaries, just like we do when we strive to help those in our communities. He was for two decades on the city's Community Forest Advisory Committee, which advised urban forestry on tree issues. An opera aficionado, he frequented the L.A. Opera, being especially fond of the contemporary avant-garde works. Confined to a wheelchair, his spirit, his determination, and his resolve to make a positive difference in his community was limitless. And you could see Pete wheeling around the Dodger Stadium parking lot when there weren't any games. He was at... He was at every community meeting, he was a real inspiration to all, and never, ever, ever, ever did you see Pete down in the mouth about anything. I think that his, his joy of life was informed by his experiences in Vietnam, and it just goes to show that even when someone has mobility issues and they faced horrific catastrophic injuries in a, in a foreign land, in a war that almost no one supported, where no one came back as a hero. I think Pete is one of those unsung heroes who, along with people like John McCain, who we recently lost, is a testament to what, being a true American with great integrity and putting what he finds important in life and in community and in society, way above his own personal needs, his own story, because he, he knew what the greater good was all about, and that's how he lived his life. And that is certainly an example to me in our friendship, and he had many legions of fans and friends, and he'll be missed in Echo Park and way beyond. And so, Pete Lassen, may you rest in peace, and what a wonderful legacy you have left all of us who ever knew you. Thank you.
Well said, well said, Mr. O'Farrell. Any other adjourning motions on my right? No. Members, see you tomorrow. This meeting's adjourned.